I'm like a six year old. Get me in trouble.
That's funny. My kid said that was sick.
And the screen.
What do you do? Take the solicitor over to chat? Is that what you just said?
No, they're coming up. They're right there.
I thought you said that you went to talk to the solicitor. What you said?
It did, yes.
What do you think that was about?
I knew.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in open session from our executive session. I will entertain a motion that we seal the minutes of the executive session.
I'll make.
Find out that no votes were taken in executive session. This is the first vote taken with respect session.
That motion.
Motion made and seconded to seal the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Secondly, I will entertain a motion to direct the solicitor, the beach commission and the administrator to carry out the actions that were discussed within the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience with us. It is seven ten. We will begin our open session with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it contains. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In just a moment, I'll ask the council to move an item to the head of the agenda that has been requested by the person presenting for reasons that are not germane to our discussion. But she has asked that she have that priority and we will certainly grant that. By way of announcements, let me say that I am very grateful to the town and its electors for the turnout of the financial town meeting. Well done to the budget committee, to the clerk and the financial staff in the town hall. Of course, to the moderator who runs an excellent meeting and for the support we received from the school. Most of all, thank you to those who were able to attend and make that happen. The second announcement is to, if you didn't look on your way in, look on your way out at things like lawn and steps and things like that that are starting to appear on the town hall. We hope very soon to welcome you through the main doors of the town hall so that you can access it easily. But we're grateful for that action. And credit the administrator and his people for making that happen. The third is just to remind you that on Monday a parade occurred. It also occurs once a year in town. And well, until Elsie three fifty, then we'll have more than one. But we only have that one and I would encourage you to come on out to the, to the Memorial Day Parade. Any other announcements? Thank you. I would then solicit a motion to move item new business two, which is a request from Megan Gonzalez. Move that to the head of the agenda and entertain that now.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You surely can't.
Getting a little easier every time I come up here, I think. Um, here are members of, oh, I'm Megan Gonzalez and I'm here as Love Wins Coastal President um, tonight, um, A three C John Dyer. Dear members of the town council, I am here today to speak to you about the importance of promoting acceptance and inclusion in our community. It is important that we embrace and celebrate the diversity of our community and ensure that all individuals feel accepted and valued for who they are. That is why I am asking you to endorse the Love is Love Initiative, movement that promotes acceptance and inclusion for all individuals regardless of their race, gender or sexual orientation. By endorsing this initiative, we are sending a powerful message to our community that we stand for love and equality for all. As part of this endorsement, I ask that you participate in the initiative by displaying a Love is Love sign at the town hall on June eighth. This simple gesture can have a profound impact on our community, showing that we are a place that celebrates diversity and embraces all individuals. I urge you to consider this request and to show your support for the Love is Love Initiative. Together, we can create a more inclusive and accepting community for all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, well, in preparation, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say I'll move the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, in preparation for, for this new business, I, I sent the resolution to everyone.
You moved, you moved it?
I moved.
I'll second it.
The motion is made and seconded.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, that's fine. Go ahead. I just want to say one thing.
Yes, please.
This, you know, you don't have any rules and regulations. So when you approve this, just bear in mind, when you get other requests, you're gonna have to approve them too.
Let me, may I just say, the motion is made and seconded and on the table. As far as discussion, I am concerned that the public and the warning of this has not been, been made and the event itself is after our next council meeting. I would suggest that we do whatever discussion we intend to do here, but that we take action at a subsequent council meeting in order to be able to bring this forward. In other words, we would meet on the eighth of June and the meeting is on the, sorry, we would meet on the sixth of June and the observance that's been requested is on the eighth of June. So I think that would give us an opportunity for the public to be made aware of what it is we're discussing because I don't believe that the public knows about this uh, resolution.
That, well, but I think it's, I think it's in line with what the quest the request was.
But the request was not for a resolution.
Well, but it was to endorse the participation in the initiative. I mean, that's, okay, that's fine.
Right. I mean, I, I, I'm not trying to prejudge the outcome of the decision. I'm saying we have received it an item for consideration and acknowledgement. But I don't have um uh, an idea that the public is aware of what it is we're, we're intending to endorse, other than listening orally to the fact that the the resolution can be read aloud. Yes.
I recall at last year's meeting, I asked for the town council to endorse um, and put forth a resolution um, acknowledging final for Little Compton. That was approved on the spot without having to go to um, back to the committee and for more public and.
I, I'm not suggesting it needs to go back to someone. I'm suggesting that the public needs to be made aware that tonight a resolution is proposed to be before us for adoption. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, resolution's fine. Resolution's fine. You did that last year. That, that, I'm looking at the shirt leaf case. The resolution doesn't, um, you can do a resolution whenever you want. That's a legislative act. So you can adopt the resolution. The only thing that I want to just call to your attention is the sign is, is similar to a flag. You don't have any um, regulations, which I don't mind doing in between now and the next meeting. Uh, but absent those regulations, one goes up, they all go up.
Well, I don't have any indications that I have not personally read the resolution. So I, I'm aware that you sent it to us, but I didn't have time to read it. The fact is, I don't know what it says. Does it, does it say that the?
Well, I think it, it does reference request to put the sign up on the June eighth.
Where?
The, the left.
No, where, where is it to be placed is my point.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we haven't discussed that.
Okay. I, I interpreted the request to be to us as individuals and to the community broadly to participate by ordering signs to be posted on their property. I was not, I was not responding to this in terms of it being a request to be posted at the town hall on public property. It's for that reason that I believe it's important that the public be aware of the fact that we are considering such a resolution. That's my, my concern.
Um, okay, I, yeah, and that's fine. I just feel like then the town needs some kind of policy because we have dealt with this year after year with our flag request. And um, I just think that we need a clear process moving forward on what's going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed. So would you adopt the policy? The resolution? I want, I want the original is what I'd like to continue to. Right.
Go ahead. I'm fine continuing, continuing this to the next meeting till we.
So we'll figure out. I'll draw my motion then. I'll put them, I'll, I'll change my motion to bring this up at the next meeting.
That, that's, that's in essence what I think is important that.
And it's done in time to, to. Not, it's not cutting it off. It's done in time to do it.
And you might want to add to the motion uh, for a submission of a policy, which I think we're gonna be able to do for your next meeting.
You can do it that fast?
I think we can, yeah. I, I think Mark can.
All right. I'll modify, I'll modify my motion as touch that again. That we put this on the agenda for the eighth meeting.
Sixth.
This sixth meeting, excuse me. And we'll have, by then we'll have, solicitor will have given us an or proposed policy for signed flags and all that stuff.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to at the sixth June meeting uh, consider the resolution and to consider a recommendation from the solicitor with respect to a policy.
I don't have any problem with the resolution, but I think this kind of circumvents what we already said about the flag. Okay, we said we needed flag policy. People came forward and said, you don't need a flag policy. And that was over two or three meetings trying to figure that out. So what we decided was we weren't gonna fly any flags except the American flag off town hall. So I think you're trying to circumvent this by saying, okay, now we want to put a sign. Well, it's still between a sign and a flag. I don't know. So I wouldn't have a problem going forward with resolution and saying you can put the love uh, sign down at the community center where you have your, where you always have your function.
Uh huh.
Could be on town property technically.
Well, I think town property.
Sorry to cut you off. However, is there a policy that's saying that only the American flag is being flown right now? Or is that a recommendation of the council? Because yeah, without a clear policy, it does allow requests to be made until there's a clear process for our community members to know what's going to be allowed or what's not gonna be allowed.
No question. Your statement is correct. We do, we do not have a specific policy that says, this is the only thing that can appear in front of the town hall. By practice, the only flag that has flown from the town hall has been the American flag in the time since that discussion. As a result, I believe the public, since it was intimately engaged in this over several meetings, as I recall, it's important that the public have an opportunity to realize that that's what's being proposed. And then in that meeting, we can address this. And I don't, if it were, if it were a situation where in so doing you somehow couldn't achieve the objective, I would say then that we should act tonight. But I see, I don't see the urgency to reach a decision tonight with the group of people that's here present as the only ones who are informed of this possibility.
Motion is made on the table, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes of the May ninth, twenty twenty four town council meeting.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Motion to approve the fire department report from April twenty twenty four.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, old business, a letter from the planning board suggesting a proposed draft amendment to the zoning ordinance on attainable housing to be considered for review and possible public hearing. I'd ask the solicitor to comment on that um, on that proposal of the planning board.
Uh, well, this is a, a novel proposal and it's a cutting edge. And uh, the, the planning board is uh, oh, yeah, Mike. The planning board is moving ahead, but as they said in their um uh, letter to you, hasn't been reviewed yet by the solicitor. And I think it's a good start and I, I'd like to use that as a base to continue on with this. And I, I would like to announce uh, that I have a um rising BL law student from Roger Williams who is very interested in this topic. And uh, she will be interning with our firm this summer. And she has been assigned one task. Little Compton attainable housing. Now, I understand, Mike, she's met, uh, had two meetings so far this week. And uh, she's been doing some research on that. We're excited to see. She's very interested in it. We'd like to continue on with this. I don't think it's in order for a hearing now. I do think we've got to tweak the language a little bit and uh, solve us some of the um uh, nuts and bolts issues, applications and things of that nature. And I think once that's done, it would be ready for a hearing.
Is it also possible that it would have the opportunity to, or give the planning board the opportunity to propose changes to the um uh, subdivision regulations and to the comprehensive plan that might be associated with this change? Is that part of it? Or are we, are we driving toward a single kind of objective here?
No, I, I think it, it's important to keep attainable housing on its own for now. Uh, you have, uh, Allison will be taking care of some other things uh, that will be in conjunction with this. She knows that, she is familiar with attainable housing. And I'm hoping that she will be able to uh, integrate it into your zoning and, and, and planning ordinance. This is a big step, by the way.
Right.
And it's a cutting edge step and it's, this isn't a situation where we can take a look at what another town has done. What's gonna happen is this other community is gonna be taking a look at what Little Compton has done. So we want to get it right. And I think we have the resources that we need to uh, help the planning board sharpen this thing.
Sure. Please.
Thank you, Tony. The, the um so there's a lot of, but some, some of this response is in to the council's request as to what, what is attainable housing, right? That's, that's where we started a few months ago. And so um I'd, I'd like to thank the, the Commons Foundation and Joe Azrak and, and Jim Lockwood here was as an organization, they've done a tremendous amount of research for the town and educating the town about our needs in particular in housing and have helped craft an approach and a solution, what we think is a good solution and approach to middle income family housing. The objective to bring young families with children, be able to repopulate Josephine Wilk. So um I sent you the, the draft ordinance that we have. Uh, and one of the, our objectives from the planning board was to get a reaction from the council so that we can uh, hopefully fine tune this at our next meeting, June fourth, and be able to deliver to you for your meeting on June sixth. Something that uh, is smooth and could be scheduled for a hearing.
As a revision to the zoning ordinance.
Correct. So, so I was hopeful that tonight you, you could
Reaction.
Give some comments and guidance to the planning board and uh, so I'll just lead in by saying it's, the objective was to have something goes beyond the state affordable housing that addresses another income level. It, in order to achieve that, uh, easiest approach to cost reduction density. So of this plan is to create two subdivision regulations for attainable housing that permit houses on about two thirds of an acre. And they come with uh restrictions and dimensional requirements that are very similar to what we have, but scaled down.
Right. It, it appears to me that, for example, your, your approval procedure specifying a special use permit to allow up to four units, it's contingent upon meeting the standards in the subsection below it in, in some, in subsection D. And that subsection seems to be, to be inappropriate. I'll say a shrinking perhaps of the of the dimensions and the requirements of a full sized lot to something smaller. So it looks as if you, you have built into this the ability to say no to an opportunistic thing that says, I'd like to throw in some houses here. On the other hand, it encourages the possibility of somebody looking at a piece of property and saying, I think we could achieve it as follows. I think we could do this, 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 and that would get us across the finish line. So I, speaking for myself, I believe it's inappropriate uh, on your, on your uh.
On the purpose of this, I was especially pleased to see farmers in there. And I think the I trust with the road they're going down and help build farmhouses on some of the farm property that they have and get those agricultural lands farming and get basically turn them into open space. Another one, the provision of attainable housing is not intended to replace affordable housing. Affordable housing is so offensive to me. From what the state put down, what affordable housing is about the restrictions on it. And they have their hands in it all the time. So attainable housing or community housing, as Jim Locke said, is a much better
Little Compton housing.
Uh, yeah, Little Compton. Excellent, Mike. Another question I had was a special use permit, a special use permit to allow up to four units.
My thinking of in terms of a subdivision. So there's a piece of property that, and call it three acres and you want to put four houses on it. Uh, which is significantly greater density than we have today. Uh, but it's planned out so that there are restrictions for the houses dimensionally and uh restrictions, deed restrictions to maintain the future affordability of that property.
So I think it has to be because as you read it, four units, I think four separate units, two duplexes, or a four family unit. So I think that has to be clarified what the intent of that is.
Okay, I, I think that it um it's a very good question to also, we're thinking of it in terms of a subdivision.
Right.
For four houses. Our current of affordable housing zoning requires the fifth house to be given away. So we haven't done any more than four. Inclusionary zoning uh, has sort of put a cap on that. So thi- this provides four houses in a reasonable uh, area and we think the, the dimensions are appropriate and, and um enough controls for adequate water and septic.
The cost lives, we have to go back to the comp plan, but I think you're gonna get more bang for a buck with a duplex. Four family, it's gonna be basically one big house with four individual units in it for four individual families. So whether that wants to come to fruition or not, I don't know. But as obviously anybody can see, one big house is gonna be a lot cheaper than four small houses.
Right.
And if that's what we're trying to retain, people coming back in the house, I think the cost of that for these families is gonna be cheaper to get into a four family house than it is to a single family house. So I, I just think some of the observations I had and I I think that's all I'm gonna say for right now.
Okay.
I agree with Gary. Um, if you put four separate houses, you gotta put four separate septic systems. You gotta have four separate wells. You can't combine all that stuff.
That's true, but that is the.
You put in, if you put in one, one dwelling, you can, you can bypass all that and put in a one, one wastewater system and have one well.
I, I understand. And you know, we have zoning right now that lets us do duplexes and, and a duplex on one acre. And we, we have, but they, they get tied back to your point of, to the state and the state requirements of affordability. We have the comprehensive permit process, which is gonna have some market rate mixed with affordable houses, but those are other solutions. This is kind of a solution to provide individual housing for young families in, in Little Compton.
I think the solicitor can down some of those avenues or some kind of language to see what would be the most attainable.
Yeah, it's, it, this, it's a, it's a um there's some fine tuning with what, what you have, or I think that planning boards acknowledge that.
I mean, I cer- certainly wouldn't want to see it. Or I don't think I would want to see a four family unit, although we've got an affordable one right over here. But a duplex, I don't think it's gonna be offensive in Little Compton.
Comments from my partners in crime. Please show.
Hi, uh, good evening, Joe Azrak, twenty eight Grinnell Road, chairman of the Commons Foundation. Um just, uh, you know, for the council's information, um in addition to working with Mike and the planning board on the draft ordinance that you received, well, we also have available and that at your discretion could be included in the documents that come back to you. Um, a draft, uh, deed restriction in all the detail that uh, would be necessary in order to report it. Of course, you'd have to fill in the details of the specific property uh, involved. Uh, and we also have prepared uh, different mathematical examples so people can see exactly how the uh, income requirements and the expenditure limitations, if not more than thirty five percent um, would actually, would work in reality so that they have an understanding of that. I don't know that that's relevant to what you're doing with the ordinance, but I think when it comes to individuals who are considering participating in attainable housing and the deed restrictions. We also have examples to show what happens in terms of, pardon me. Um, under different appreciation scenarios over, say, a ten year period. So people can understand that while it is a ninety nine year um affordability period for the deed restriction, that it doesn't restrict their ability to make profits if they have to sell the property at some point in the future, depending upon what happens with the appreciation of the property and the consumer price index, things of that nature. So I just wanted to make you aware of that additional information that's available that may be helpful if you want to use it or look at it. Uh, the last thing I would like to request is that the um town solicitor, uh, if you're going to be, you know, providing the feedback on this, would be very helpful to us if you could tell us specifically which additional documents you would like to have in order to publish the material for a public hearing. Um, because I think if we don't have it, I think we could put it together for you very quickly. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
This question, tax base. If you put up an affordable house and the tax assessor comes in, get assessed as what it's affordable as, what it's could possibly sell for. Where does, where does that line go?
If it is rental property, there's actually a case on this and because the language in the statute is a little um soft. But if it's rental property, it gets taxed. soft, but if it's rental property, it gets taxed at 8% of the gross rental income. If it is not, if it's affordable and its homeowner affordable, the tax assessor takes into account the deed restriction and what that does to the value of the property and assesses it accordingly. This wouldn't be part of that, because this is attainable housing, and it's a different program. The deed restriction would be taken into account when the property is valued for assessment purposes, but it wouldn't have the same effect or the statutory effect that it would have if it were affordable housing under the state program.
Anything to affect it? It's got to be, that doesn't affordable. Well, affordable is the wrong word, attainable.
Attainable. And there will be a, the Mr. Azrak referenced that there is, they have a deed restriction for that. That would be recorded, and that would be accounted for in the assessment process.
Okay. There's no reference to who would be overseeing or regulating the attainable house in terms of like, who's keeping track that is.
It's on the next one.
It will be on the next one?
Yeah, on a whole business.
Okay, all right.
I believe that's what it is, if I read it correctly.
Just, that's one of the fine tunes you need to put in there.
Yeah, so is the town going to be in charge of regulating and overseeing? Like, making sure that the attainable housing remains attainable, or who's doing this?
So it turns out that an enormous number of people in this town have volunteered for this effort. And the amount of work that's been done is pretty astounding. And one of the things that's been done is that Mark Rechen here, who used to develop property in the People's Republic of Cambridge.
I know where you're going with that one, Jim.
Has actually done a fair amount of research to who it is that can and can't do for this situation. And there are firms that we're not sure exactly which is the best firm. But these are proposed drafts, and Mark only brought five.
I think there were seven.
There were seven, so you get one. And it turns out that there are a number of different firms in the state that were doing this and look for a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
So then, in fact, the town does not have to incur that cost. Although we really don't have the information necessary to figure out who it is. That might be the best, but I would guess, and the reason, and I'm going to make the following brief. My understanding is that guys have a public hearing, it can't occur for at least a month. Because it would be a certain amount of public.
Advertising.
Advertising. And to be perfectly blunt, there is some time pressure here associated with our ability to be able to provide the kind of housing that the town, I'm quite sure, would be interested in.
Okay, so you give us a list of nine agencies here. But will they monitor attainable housing? I know they monitor affordable housing at the moment, but will they?
They've indicated that they participate.
Okay, they would oversee the application process like they do for affordable housing, et cetera.
That is a soluble problem. And the deed restrictions, you know, that's a soluble problem also. There are hard parts about this, but my request is relatively simple, and that is that I'm wondering if there's any way that the town council could consider scheduling a public hearing and allow the next three days for the intern, who, by the way, we met and were very impressed with, to be able to, and the solicitor's office, to come up with whatever tweaks in the language are necessary in order to create an adequate public hearing.
Can I ask you a question? Is two weeks going to make a difference? Two weeks? Because the time, the planning board is June, June, at the June 4 meeting, which I'm going to be there. And then that would be in time for the June 6 meeting for the town council.
I think that's a good question, and I guess it would be presumptuous for us to say that two weeks would make a difference, but there, I just want to say there's time pressure. And so I'm not going to say that two weeks will make a difference. So if it, the quicker it can be done, the better it is for our efforts to bring this process to fruition. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Allow the solicitor to go forward and look over the draft from the planning board and come back with us with his recommendations and changes.
As well as the planning board.
As well as the planning board. What's the timeframe on that, Tony?
Well, thanks, it's June 4. Yeah.
That's pretty quick.
Why could he can do it?
To come back, have the planning board ready for some, for the next town council meeting on June 6.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to so charge. Dr. Locke, we are grateful once again for your clarity and how urgent things are. And we've never heard you say otherwise, so we're accustomed. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Thanks for that very useful discussion report. The next item of business is to provide an update on intended repairs to John Dyer Road, including the opportunity to receive reimbursement via the municipal program grant. I've asked the town administrator to bring us up to date on that.
Bob, did we combine all together? Was that what the last one was? Because all business one was what the draft attainable housing changed the zoning ordinance was. Business three is a workshop discussion procedure, future deed restrictions as it pertains to affordable and attainable housing in Little Compton. So I don't know if that's just about something you want to place on file.
Did you have a draft, you have a draft? Please end of there.
All business three.
Your request for an up
Yeah.
of that meeting resulted in a copy of the draft minutes from that meeting. That's, that's.
That's good. Good backup, sure.
Clicking your packet.
Yeah, we're still going to have the discussion now.
Yeah, so that's a separate subject from what we just announced.
Yeah, it's different.
What we're talking about now is the update on intended repairs.
Okay, sorry, all right.
Yes, I think BETA has been engaged now to paving for John Dyer Road. Three major issues, one is the culvert, the Parus Hill. And the other issue is in the north side, by having they are, we have, it was just very much like what they done with, oh, they had to do a survey of the area, they are doing the engineering right now. And they are beginning to take our side. Which is a couple of all difficult to deal with, but they are observing that. We did get some funding through the municipal resiliency. We have a total of 40 dollars going to the south that's been appropriated for the event that we've seen, which was a total of and that was five of the projects, one was South Shore. Beach, South Shore Beach, Tomway, and John Dyer Road. Initially, we got the different issues in John Dyer Road, and this is the most recent.
Yeah, so I asked this to go on the agenda. So obviously, this issue on John Dyer Road, on the south side and the north side. And we did receive the municipal resiliency grant, and there's $12,960 for engineering, that 10% matched by the town, which will give us $14,255, I think it says. Do I need to take a motion to have BETA engineer the north side of John Dyer Road? We'll be happy to do it. Are they currently engineering?
They are currently observing the area, but eventually they're going to come back with a proposal, you know, for engineering, for survey and engineering, similarly what they did with the culvert of Parus Hill.
So to clarify, the, the south end of John Dyer has been addressed by BETA as a result of their review of the culvert that is not handling water flow. The north end is a problem that is not yet defined as to its solution, but BETA is assisting in developing that. That will require, I believe, new funding. Should it, for example, require some modification to John Dyer? On the other hand, if it is because of improper Holbrook Road drainage issue, then we would go back to the state and say we have a problem with, with stormwater exiting John Dyer Road and not being handled by the, by thing. So to your question, we have identified funding for the south end. We don't have funding, extra funding for the north end. It would be, I think, rolled into our John Dyer Road paving.
The all engineering, both the survey.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, this grant was 2021, we received this grant. So that, that 14, well, the $12,960 is been for some years. And I don't want it to, you know, specifically for engineering on the north end of John Dyer Road. So you're telling me BETA is going to prepare something for the council?
The south side.
And when will we expect that?
We actually were supposed to have that on Tuesday, unfortunately, didn't, but we expected to do that early next week. Get back over there. Now, you know, we'll, we'll be visiting the area.
Thank you.
Any further questions on that? All right, the next item then is to review the visit on 14 May by Housing Secretary Stefan Feyer. The minutes of that meeting are included in your package. I have received late today from the assistant who accompanied the secretary, a summation of what their, their assumptions are about the town of Little Compton. I will distribute that to all of the members of the council, as well as all the members who attended that meeting, which numbered about 12 people, as I have in my tally. And we will solicit review of that document from each of you to be summated and sent back to the Rhode Island Department of Housing. So I thought that was a very timely response to an effort that the sector very innate in coming here. Let me just say that his, his method of, of discussion was solicit. We don't have a briefing package. We don't have something to give you that Zay thought. Rather, his purpose was to sit and listen, and from time to time, interject questions here and there. But I think it was a profitable session from the Rhode Island housing standpoint. We were able to score a few of the points that we've been trying to make with respect to how our community is different than other communities. I know that upstate, they get tired of hearing about how we're different, but that's a message that they need to hear, as we'll see in some later things in our package. We are, it's very, very important that we are upfront and direct about why it is that what we're doing requires some different handling, not because we need to be coddled, but because we need to be recognized for being an entity that doesn't have a sewer line, that doesn't water supply, that doesn't have a lot of things. All right, off my soapbox. Any further on this, on the visit?
Yeah, I, this, this was what I was alluding to when Andrew asked if there was who's going to administer or monitor the attainable housing, where it says it was stated that the town is expected to bear some of the cost and responsibility monitoring properties, that the properties remain affordable or attainable, either by a hired appointment, pointy volunteer, or a third party hired for the job. Now, Jim Locke just answered my question. But what people don't understand is say, okay, we'll just hire another guy. It's only $30,000, but it's $30,000, it's $30,000 plus another $30,000 for health insurance, plus the perks you get, get along with it. So by the time you hire another person, it's $80,000. So I wanted to make sure the town was going to have to hire another person. I thought maybe the Little Compton Community Housing, which is your group, might be able to do it, but since you gave us the list of these people and you said that it would be little, little or no cost to the town, I think that question's been answered. So thank you, Jim. I'm making motion to place these on file.
I'll, just to continue the conversation, I think, I wasn't at that meeting, but I'm sure they talked about the the governor's budget proposal, Article Five, Question Three, which includes $100 million housing bond. And which 90 million will go towards housing production and preservation of affordable units. And I found it interesting that also 20 million for workforce housing, they call it workforce housing, was earmarked in that. So I think I'll make a separate motion. I think we're already in, you wanted to file this. But I'd like to make a motion that we do a resolution to support that bond, Article Five, Question Three. I actually wrote something up for review, maybe for next week's meeting, two weeks' meeting, that we support this effort for $100 million.
This is the housing bond that will appear in November on the ballot.
Motion, you got a motion made and seconded on the table first.
To place on file, right. The discussion has revealed another item, therefore, before we undertake that motion, is there a motion to endorse Counselor McHugh's request for a or do you wish to make that motion?
No, you can make that.
Have that resolution. I therefore would move that we prepare and submit a motion in support of the bond that was addressed in his discussion.
I'll second your motion.
Discussion on that.
Just confused.
Yeah, I am too. We got a motion on the table already. You're overriding that motion?
I am.
Solicitor?
What's the purpose for overriding the original?
I have no reason to override the motion.
Let's just get rid of that, and then he can make a motion and a resolution, okay?
Track that.
Fair enough. I hereby entertain a vote on the motion that was made and seconded to place the minutes of this meeting on file.
Minutes of the planning board minutes that were submitted by the planning board to the council.
I need to clarify, they're not really.
They're not planning board minutes.
Can you just place on file all business three communication?
Motion to place on file all business three.
So you're amending your motion?
Amending it, so we get two.
I amend my second.
You're going to amend all this? Okay.
Favor of.
Something so simple turns into.
Is there any further discussion on the amended motion, counsel? All in favor of the amended motion to place on file all business three materials? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for your correction, and thank you for your correction.
I'll make the motion to make a resolution to support Article Five, Question Three. $100 million housing bond.
Is there further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion? Aye, and the opposed? Thank you. Next item is to provide an update on the status of the planned assessment of the needs of the town's senior citizens. I'm going to hand this off to the town administrator in just a moment. Let me just say that we have been notified by Kim Jacobs, who was the facilitator who handled our hazard mitigation surveys, that she is willing and able to perform this survey lead role, and therefore, the administrator is engaging her to replace the person that we had originally selected because of a, of a health reason is not able to fulfill that obligation. Mr. Administrator?
I may, you are correct, Kim Jacobs, she's very well, as you presented at the last council meeting about that hazard mitigation, she has to run this test. She submitted a proposal, unfortunately, I received it yesterday, so it could not be included in the agenda. But the scope of the work, similar to the original scope of work, the cost is a little higher. However, it's within the range of things. of work, the cost, uh, is a little higher, uh, however, it's within the range of thing of, uh, what we had, proposed. Um, so can the, how do I take it forward at this point, or can I just engage? I'm not quite sure.
We've directed him to engage the prior person. He has come up with a health issue and we've directed him to find an alternative, which he is bringing back to us.
If, if the council's comfortable with that, yes.
What's your pleasure?
I'm, I'll move it.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to engage Kim Jacobs to oversee the senior assessment survey.
So can we get a copy of the, uh, memorandum of agreement? I don't need it now, but, uh, so we can review it because we're going to vote on it in two weeks.
I think they just voted no.
No, just.
You said we're voting for it now?
On the table.
Yeah, so.
Discussion, yeah.
So, I, a, a little bit more on the seniors. Um, I've been talking with Angela Denham. She contacts me two or three times a week. They still were looking for a place to call their own, so to speak, where they can meet during the day. And I think I found a place. I'm not at liberty to say where it is right now because there's a few loopholes that I have to discuss with some other people, but I think, I think it's looking good to get a senior center for them and it won't be, it won't be much of a cost to the town. So.
Yes.
So I would, I would, would like to, I, we talked about two weeks. I don't know. It's been since November. We've been talking about this, so I don't know what another two weeks would be anyway. So I'd like to see the memorandum of agreement before I, I vote on it.
I have probably seen it. I'm in the sugar dim, but I'm not sure if that's something you want to give.
We have a motion in a second on the table, so we're going to take a vote and find out right now.
You have a motion to accept it, so I would say give.
At public consumption, this is a memorandum addressed to the administrator from, uh, Kim Jacobs, describing the purpose, background and scope of work that she proposes to undertake with respect to conducting the survey we're speaking of.
What's the difference in cost? It's ninety-two.
Four hundred.
Four hundred bucks? Okay.
Original was eight?
The original bid was $8,000 from the individual who cannot perform the duty. The fee, uh, proposed by, um, uh, Kim Jacobs is $9,200.
That's my understanding. There were no invoices from the first gentleman, correct?
Any further discussion?
Ask one question. This is, this is the same as the previous MOU, except for the price.
Exactly. The, uh, well, actually it's a little more extensive because she's been putting a couple more tests in, but it's actually favorable.
What, what are the other things that are different? Does it include?
Six and seven.
Those items are to develop a draft report titled Community Lead, Community Needs Assessment Phase One, Aging in Little Compton, and Task Seven to present the findings of the draft report to leaders, partners, interested citizens in an open forum. At the forum, allow for community input and feedback, review the input and feedback and modify the report accordingly as direction. This is, uh, again, a role that she exhibited great skill in with the hazard mitigation review and was able to both put forward a ready for prime time product and then listen to the feedback, incorporate the feedback and come back and say, here's the final version. And that version, by the way, has to sell at, uh, the Rhode Island EMA and FEMA. And similarly, this product will need to withstand the scrutiny of the public in terms of its representation of, of the, uh, correct answers with respect to the seniors of Little Compton. So we consider her to be particularly well suited for this, for this replacement that was necessary. It will sit. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. The next item of business is new business is to receive proposals for spring roadside grass and br- grass and brush mowing.
No longer have our floor with the, um.
The letter swifter?
The swiper.
So usually we hand it to me who fumbles with it for an hour and a half, and then we finally get it open.
There are two.
Do you want me to hand them over?
Give it to a fisherman. He can open it up. The first bid is from RM Construction, Rich McGee and Son, and it is for $10,000 for the proposal. The second bid is from, what's the tractor name? BJR Enterprises, which is Bonnie, uh, Rigo, is the authorized representative, and it's for $300 per hour spring roadside mowing.
Oh, you got a look. How many, how, how many hours did it work last year? Quite a few. That was 300 is what.
The bid should be completed, should be submitted on a total cost basis.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we awarded to Rich McGee.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to award to Rich McGee. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
We need to get that one done.
May I say to you that is my past practice that we, we provide these items to the town administrator and Director Public Works to act in the best interest of the town. I accept your motion. I accept your, uh, way you've done it. We have a bidder who does not comply with the requirements. That is, that has been our typical practice.
Uh, well, no, and I, and I agree with that, uh, just for comment. Did, did this, did the, did Rich's motion have an hourly wage?
Yeah, 290. He was still cheaper.
290, okay.
He was still cheaper. Looked at it when it went by me.
Okay, thank you.
Made it on the table.
The next item.
Vote on it.
You voted on it.
The next item of business is a request from Wilma McMahon School for the North Side of the Commons Triangle to be closed to traffic on June 13th for eighth grade graduation.
Motion to approve all local stipulations that need to.
Motion made and seconded to approve the motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, who made the second?
Officer Gollum. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item of business is to consider requesting the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust, and I note that the chair and the vice chair are present with us, to seek advice from legal counsel, expert in land and real estate acquisition as to the trust's authority within the bounds of their enabling legislation to participate in multi-purpose acquisitions. But let me tell you that the wording is mine, the idea is mine. I believe we still have people asking questions, and my purpose in proposing this to the council is that we act in a supervisory capacity to say, we request that you go and determine this from legal counsel who's expert in land and real estate acquisitions. And so therefore, that's my purpose. I have no reason to believe there's something that needs to be investigated. I am not part of any group that's trying to say, we should do something different, but I wanted to offer that, um, that ex, that explanation. So this, this comes from me and, and I hope will solidify in the public arena the role of the Ag Trust as is appropriate with respect to its, uh, charter.
You want to move it, sir?
No, I, I would like to let the chair speak to the question.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Richmond, Chair of the Ag Trust. So coincidentally, or maybe not coincidentally, a month ago, the Ag Trust discussed amongst ourselves the same, very same issue. Uh, we realize that ourself, both ourselves, the trustees, and by extension, the general public, uh, really need to know what is, what the limits of our role can be. So to that end, we've, uh, well, I should add, so, and how do you do that, right? You, you can't just, in my opinion, this is, this is how the discussion went. Um, you can't just hire a lawyer and say, what does this law allow us to do? Because I don't think that's how lawyers work. Tony, you can correct me here, but just a general assessment just gives you general ideas. That's not going to be helpful, right? So way we solve, or came to the end of that discussion was, we agreed to go back, come up with a list of questions, specific, very specific questions, property related, very specific scenarios. Could we do this on this property? Could we do that on that property? Could we acquire something this way? Could we sell something that way? And so we're in the process of formulating those questions now. We have a, a pool of, uh, suggested attorneys that are qualified in this field, and we certainly would take suggestions for more. Um, and we'd certainly, you know, encourage the public and any of the counselors to add to our questions. Um, you know, do you guys think you could do this on the enablement legislation? And we could add it to our list of things that are going to be analyzed. So we're in that process now and, um, you know, we welcome any and all input.
Is this charge inconsistent with the direction that you're going?
No, I think it's a hundred percent consistent.
So my question is, we've already got a solicitor on retainer, so I don't know why we should have to go out and hire another lawyer to look at these questions.
Actually, may I address that?
Yeah.
This is something that, uh, the Ag Trust, uh, would be paying for.
Okay.
Correct. I don't think it's appropriate to have the solicitor do. I think it's been appropriate. And I, I, I think it's also, this is nothing, Mr. Marion shouldn't do it either because he's your legal counsel. You should really have outside counsel doing that. So I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, to have done. And I, I do think your, uh, motion is in order based upon what Mr. Richmond just said.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Uh, the motion is made to so charge the Ag Trust. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have to say, quick discussion. Um, I, I think it's, what you're asking is how can the Ag Trust operate in a Little Compton housing market while working within their enabling legislation? And you guys are going to pay, uh, for a lawyer or an expert, whatever you want to deem him or her, and you're going to pay for it. Um, and you know, Bob mentioned, you know, people are still questioning, uh, public arena came up. And, you know, how can, you know, the Ag Trust, you know, come out and, and pick a, a lawyer or an expert? And then the people are going to say, well, they picked them anyway. So that's why they decided what they can do this in their enabling legislation. So I think there's, there's some way that we can, you know, get everyone or the public or whoever to at least have a, a say or a list of people. I know you've mentioned it. Um, so when this is done and we have the answers that we want, it doesn't have to be resurrected at a later date.
Well, I, one response to that is you, you know, no one necessarily gets the answer they want, right? So I understand the idea that if you hire your own lawyer, you're going to get the answers you want. But in this case, that's, that's not going to how it's going to work because we're going to have, lay out these scenarios and get questions on specific answers. That's why you don't ask a general survey question. So first of all, go ahead, Tony.
Sir, may I? That's a good question.
Hey, thanks.
Uh, what's, what's going to happen here? This is why I, I made my earlier statement that it should be outside counsel, because what that outside counsel is going to do is going to be to furnish an opinion letter. There are specific provisions in the Code of Professional Responsibility dealing with opinion letters. So if that opinion turns out to be wrong later on, uh, that's a malpractice claim. So I don't think any attorney that, uh, is going to, uh, agree to this engagement is, is going to want to, um, bend their opinion on this, knowing that later on, if, uh, uh, the Ag Trust, uh, takes actions based upon that opinion letter that turn out to be incorrect, and turns out that there's some liability, the lawyer is going to be on the hook. So that's why I suggest that it should be, uh, outside counsel. Uh, they have, um, different requirements under the Code of Professional Responsibility that I think directly address your concerns. That's why I make this, that's why I made the statement.
Okay.
You, I mean, you can look at whatever the opinions come back and let the council know.
Absolutely.
Just for our own edification.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a request from the LC 350 Committee for the town to sign off on the Rhode Island Department of Transportation Parade Permit for the 350th Celebration Parade to be held Saturday, August 16th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM over roadways in Little Compton.
Motion to sign off.
I would.
With all necessary town, local stipulation.
Would, would you be willing that that motion, uh, refers it to the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town?
Sure. So move.
Second.
Correct it's.
The motion is made and seconded to, to refer to the town administrator, the matter of signing off for the town on the parade permit for the 350th Celebration Parade. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Next is a request from Chief Petron to designate this week as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme Honoring Our Past, Forging Our Future.
So move. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Could I offer to our EMTs a very broad thank you for, uh, 24/7, always being ready and always be effective in what they do. Uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next is to consider authorizing a release of a request for proposals by the, these are proposals on behalf of the Little Compton Community Center, which as you know, we own, for upgrades to the building. Tasks include kitchen renovation, installation of a walk-in cooler freezer, window replacements, and new cedar shingling. The sources of funding include the community learning center's municipal grant. I'd ask that the, uh, administrator comment with respect to the solicitation.
If the, uh, obviously we have to do an RFP, that's what I would ask you to optimize the, and any draft RFP to be, uh.
So move.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to refer this matter to the, to the town administrator for creation of the RFP. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So it's, Bob, we got the ARPA funds, Little Compton got 324,000. It's on the new business seven. Is this what we're going to use? Are we going to use any of this money for?
That's, that, no, it is, it's, these funds, this community learning center municipal grant is part of the ARPA.
Yeah, these are not the town's ARPA funds. These are the state's ARPA funds, which it's had, which it has put into what they call a capital projects fund. In fact, it may even be national. No, it's state, right?
The question was, are we going to be allowed, allowed to use these funds on the upgrade for the community center?
That's what we're applying for it for.
Okay.
Right. Yes, it is those funds that will be used on that. Yes.
That's.
I just wanted to clarify, it's not the ARPA funds that we are.
Right.
Okay. Um, the next item is as Board of Licensed Commissioners to entertain a request from the Game Club for a Class F1 one-day beverage license for a clam bake June 9th.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
We use the.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is indications, a public notice from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Office of Water Resources, a draft Ripley's remediation general permit and a hearing set for June 18th. The solicitor has looked at this and may have a comment for us. I don't. I don't.
Oh, yes. This is part of the rulemaking process. And before, uh, under the, uh, regulations or adopting regulations of this nature, BM is required to go to what's known as a 30-day public notice. Uh, this, uh, in the state, as well as other interested parties. If you have some issues with this proposed permit, If, uh, you have some issues with this proposed permit, uh, you send the comments in, in the thirty days. After that thirty day, there'll be a public hearing and then they'll be adopted. Okay, action is required.
To place it on file, second.
Motion made and seconded to place this matter on file. Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Uh, the consent calendar, I'd like to remove item three D for discussion. Is there any other item that some, that a counselor would like to remove? All right, I, I would entertain a motion to place on file the consent calendar with the exception of three D.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, three D, and, uh, this is an Exeter, uh, resolution which I, uh, strongly endorse and believe we should consider our own. This is in opposition to House Bill seventy-nine eighty-three, which proposes to create an office of the State Building Commissioner and confer upon that commissioner conduct and supervision of building code inspections of all residential and commercial building regulated by the code within the state, comma, taking control over local building decisions away from the cities and towns. I can't imagine a more draconian, uh, grab. Sir?
Familiar with the legislation. It's already passed the House. It's in the Senate.
Passed the House.
It's already passed the House. Uh, the difficulty with the bill is what you just said. Basically, if we switch to a building official under the auspices of the state, a building official, his decisions could be overridden, uh, by a state official. Building permits could be issued for the town of Little Compton by the state building official. It is a very wide-ranging piece of legislation. It's already passed the House. A lot of other communities are upset about this.
May I then amend? I don't have the Senate bill number, but propose a resolution in opposition to the applicable Senate bill companion to this.
I don't think there's a Senate companion bill. I think it's just a House bill.
So maybe. People surprised that.
They will, yes.
No.
Can they adopt a resolution to oppose any companion bill that may go before the Senate? That mirrors House seventy-nine eighty-three?
They can, yes. That's very appropriate.
Is that the motion just made?
That is the motion.
Second.
Thank you to the.
Tony, what's the reasoning for this? Do you have any opinion?
It's, uh, part of the, uh, uh, issue. How much, uh, control local community should have over, over development? This is part of it.
Because they know better than us, state people.
And partly in response probably to the ADU when it went down in flames.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
I'm holding.
Aye. Russian paid the bills.
Is it, is the ADU in the Senate? Do you have any update on that?
Uh, that, that, that's still under consideration.
So they've got June, right? They, they recess in June.
In about three weeks.
So that'll be shortly.
Yes.
Sorry.
Before we get too carried away, you made the second.
I did.
Did you? Because originally he did.
I moved it.
He said.
Doesn't matter. Second.
How are we doing, guys?
Second Gary's motion to pay the bills.
The one that's been made by Counselor Materonis and seconded by Counselor Gollum Bestky to pay the bills is their discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye, aye.
There being no further business before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Worked out. Got that.
Oh, man.
Not a week ago.
When you want.
Not all the way.
Oh, yes, 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 please.
What do you think of that?
What I just, what we just did.
Ten million dollars, hundred million dollars. No, I'd like to take it.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to read it that hard. But I did it myself.